We proceed then to the announcements and the events. I believe Councilmember Diane Branson has an announcement to make.
Thank you, Mayor. I stopped by the Senior Citizen Center last week and Bobby Arthur asked me to invite everyone to come to the spaghetti dinner Friday, August the 15th. It is their fundraiser for their center's special gifts. The tickets are $5 ahead of time, $6 at the door, but I understand there's only a few at-the-door tickets. The people that will be serving you your spaghetti, garlic bread, and salad will be the mayor and some of the council members. So I encourage everyone to please buy your ticket and come have... The spaghetti will be from... When did she tell me?
Five.
Where?
Five.
Oh, I do need to tell you what time. Yes, it's five until eight. And the spaghetti is being brought in by one of the restaurants. So please get with Bobby Arthur at the Senior Citizen Center for your tickets. Thanks.
Councilmember Williams, I believe you have a couple of announcements.
Thank you. First of all, I apologize to the seniors that I won't be in town that weekend, so I won't be able to do that, but I understand there'll be some people standing in my place. The other announcement I have is we just completed an amnesty program with our courts. And the total number of people who appeared was 170. The amount paid was $13,260.50. Total money due is $77,424, which also we have some payments plans that are including that. It's going to put it well over $90,000. Total number of warrants cleared up to the amnesty program is 440 warrants. Total costs associated with amnesty program is only $1,090, which I think that's a good return on our money. So I'd like to say kudos to our court, our judge, and the people that work in the court, and also our police department for helping out with this. And I think this is a very good idea, and this is something we may do in the future. So Judge Kyle Knapp, if you'll pass this along to your court, we'd appreciate it. That's all, Mayor.
Further announcements by anyone of events taking place in Holton City? Okay, there being none, we move then to item number four. This is a public hearing. I'm holding a conflict of interest affidavit. If you'll notice in the information that's published, Councilmember Trey Fowler is the applicant, and he will be excusing himself at this time. And we will proceed with the public hearing. I believe, Mr. Pulisca, you're going to introduce this item.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Members of the council, citizens of Holton City, this item is Z-004-03. To conduct a public hearing, consider the application of Mr. Trey Fowler for a zoning change request from the D Duplex Residential District to the M2 Heavy Industrial District on Track 17A, G Acres Survey, A30, and a zoning change from M1 Industrial District to the M2 Heavy Industrial District on Track 17 and 18C, G Acres Survey, Abstract 30, located on the north side of Midway Road, containing approximately five acres of land and locally known as 6217, 6219, and 6300 Midway. The accompanying ordinance is O-2003-01515. Consideration and/or action on ordinance O-2002-03215, omitting the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city of Holton City, Texas, for a zoning change from the D Duplex Residential District to the M2 Heavy Industrial District on Track 17A, G Acres Survey, Abstract 30, and from the M1 Industrial District to the M2 Heavy Industrial District on Track 17 and 18C, G Acres Survey, Abstract 30, and again containing approximately five acres of land located on the north side of Midway's road, and this is the first reading of that ordinance. I gave you the location as stated previously. Applicant is requesting a zoning change in order to possibly further develop the site in the future and to come into compliance with the city's ordinances. Existing zoning is D Duplex Residential and the land use commercial on that lot, and M1 Industrial on the other two, and those are vacant. I list for you the adjacent zoning and land uses in your report. Access to the property will be from Midway Road. Comprehensive land use plan, the site is designated as industrial according to the city's comprehensive land use plan, therefore the request for zoning would be in compliance with this plan. Legal notice regarding the public hearing was published in the Fort Worth Star-Telegram on July 11, 2003. Property owner notification for all properties within 200 feet of the site were mailed out on June 13, 2003. Twenty properties were notified. Staff received one in favor and seven in opposition, and those letters were discussed at the pre-council meeting. Formal attachments include the site and the zoning maps, surrounding property owner information, list of property owners, GIS aerial for your review. At their meeting on July 22, 2003, the P&amp;Z Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the zoning change request from the D Duplex Residential District to the M2 Heavy Industrial District on Track 17A, and from M1 Industrial District to the M2 Heavy Industrial District on Tracks 17 and 18C. And I formally submit the ordinance for your review.
Members of the council, before I open the public hearing to members of the audience, any questions for Mr. Pulisca regarding this application? Okay, there being none, thank you, Mr. Pulisca.
Thank you, Mayor.
I will open the public hearing at this time, and this will afford members of the audience who wish to speak either for or against the application that is under consideration to come forward at this time. I do have one appearance before the council request filled out from Mr. Noe Pranivong.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. In just a moment, Mr. Pranivong will give us his address for the record. I do want to mention to the other members of the audience, because this is a public hearing, it's not necessary to fill out one of the yellow cards, and after Mr. Pranivong is finished with his comments, others in the audience will be given an opportunity to speak for or against. So, Mr. Pranivong, give us your address for the record, and tell us what your thoughts are regarding this issue, please.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and fellow citizens. As a resident of 6306 Solona Circle South, I share the concerns of other citizens on Solona Circle about the environmental effects the zoning change will cause. Yes, perhaps Mr. Fowler's company, as it stands today, is not much of an environmental threat to the neighborhood, but by granting the zoning request, you forfeit the future safety of our neighborhood. As you know, he is requesting a change from D Duplex, a residential district for two family-attached dwellings, to an M2, the highest industrial zoning ordinance allowed by the city. This to me shows a complete disregard for the surrounding residents. How can this be possible to live in a residential neighborhood all your life, and one day you wake up to find that your backyard is now an industrial zone, whereas approved by the zoning regulations, the potential exists for a potential power generation plant to be built in your backyard? Many of my fellow neighbors have expressed concerns about pollution, not just pollutions, but by the existing pollutions from existing zoning areas in the proximity. Mr. Randy Thompson, who has to clean out his pool every time he wants to use it because of contaminants from Lassiter's Plumbing, pollute his pool every day. All the neighbors complain of the 15 to 20 dogs that bark at all hours of the day and night, the Guens and the Benitez's, who have young children to worry about the air they will breathe growing up in the neighborhood, Leela Pranivong, who has a garden in the backyard and from which she grows vegetables and shares them with the neighbors. Proud and progressive is our motto. We at Solona Circle are proud to be citizens of Holton City. We are progressive. We want our children to grow up in a safe and nurturing environment. We are proud in the fact that we live in a safe neighborhood where children can run around and play in the nearby pecan park without fear from the dangers of a heavy industrial zone that, if approved, will lie adjacent to the park. Proud and progressive, not proud and destructive. This is not a place for an industrial zone, not next to a residential zone, not next to a park, not next to an elementary school. As of June 24th, at the June 24th Planning and Zoning Commission hearings, Mr. Fowler told the commission that he is requesting the change in order to come into compliance with city ordinances. Now automatically, this to me implies Mr. Fowler knowingly acquired land out of compliance. I say knowingly because he is a member of the city council. The argument in support of Mr. Fowler is, well, Mr. Pranivong, you do know that the property to his east is Zone M2, and the surrounding areas also are zoned for industrial, except for the residential to his north. Well, my answer is yes, but I've lived there for 23 years, and the property he purchased has been zoned residential for 23 years, as far as I know. Should I give up living in a residential zone and allow Mr. Fowler to zone his property as heavy industrial because he chose to buy property that was out of zoning compliance, and with a push of a button from the council members, he can change the residential zone into a heavy industrial zone? I do not have the power to push that button. I only have the power to vote, and on this issue, as a citizen, my vote doesn't count. But if you, the council members, can see the concerns of the citizens over the desire of the businesses, I trust you will do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pranivong. And if you will remain at the podium for just a moment in case members of the council have questions for you. Councilmember Williams and Councilmember Sutton, following that.
I got a question. You said the Lassiter's Plumbing. I guess in this map, that would be the property east of Mr. Fowler's M2?
Yes.
You said that they have contaminants draining into...
From what Mr. Thompson tells me, it's from the parking that they have numbers of vehicles that they park in the back, and I guess it's not paved, and all the dust and whatnot just goes over to the residence.
Then we're not talking about contamination, we're just talking about dirt. You said contaminant.
Well, I mean, he's in the plumbing business. I don't know what chemicals he uses or stores in the backyard.
Did I misunderstand? Did you say that he gets contaminants in his pool and has to drain it?
Yes, he has to clean out the filters every time he... He has to clean out the pool every time he wants to use it.
But you're... We don't know whether it's contamination or whether it's dirt?
No, but we do know it's from the surrounding industrial zones.
Okay, and I have a question for the planner while he's standing there with you. This Midway Park, just to the west of it.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me about that property?
Uh, Midway Park is a... My understanding that's a... I believe that's a trucking firm there, and largely the area there, if you look at the aerial in your packet... Is... You can see that behind that are the city's properties where the water tower is, and the area of concern there, I believe, from my understanding, that's a trucking firm that ships items just in and out. It has very minimal impact.
What is the zoning on that piece of property?
If you refer back to the map, that is a heavy industrial.
M2?
Yes, sir. It's a continuation. See how the M2 zone comes up and encompasses Midway Park?
Okay.
Drops down, and you see the duplex that we're referring to?
If you're looking at the bold black border that's around Midway Park?
Right.
If I'm reading this right, Parkdale Gardens and that, that crosses over the Midway there?
Correct.
Both of those would be M2?
That is correct.
Okay, so property?
Yes, sir.
Would property on both sides of this rezon... Now, one of these pieces of properties is an M1. Is that right?
That is correct, and if you'll see, that's vacant on your aerial. And what it would do, it'd form a contiguous then zone of M2 that comes up south from Granton, across Midway, and again north to the southern regions of Solona Circle.
Can you elaborate on any of the drainage in that area?
I would have to defer to the engineer at that point. However, Mr. Fowler, there is no drainage information per se on these properties because they're tracks and they're not platted, and that's a good question. If and when Mr. Fowler plats, it's my understanding that he is, the city then will receive drainage information due to the drainage study.
And tell me where this drainage will have to drain to?
It's my understanding that, of course, if he does any development, the drainage will have to go towards Midway.
Midway?
Yes, sir.
Now, in other words, all the way to the back from his house to Midway? You can't drain anything on his house, am I right?
Cannot drain anything on his house.
Or any of the homes along there?
That is my understanding. Again, I would rather defer to the engineer for that specifics, but when we do get that drainage information, and he does develop, he does have to address the drainage issues.
Okay. Did I understand you to say that you'd lived here 23 years ago?
Yes, since 1980.
Okay. I wasn't on the council in 1980, so I don't know. What was the zoning of this property when you bought it, do you know?
Well, it's as a duplex, just as it is now.
No, I'm talking about the M1s and the M2s around the area.
I believe it was D still. I'm not sure about the M1, but before...
The M1 properties that are to the east have been M1 for quite some time.
What about the M2 in the Midway Park?
No, now, last year's addition, I did the M2 on that, so it's been since I've been here, so it's been within this...
No, the Midway Park addition.
My term here. Midway Park is an old zoning, and that's been prior to my administration in the planning department.
It was M2 when you came?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
The only one I've done has been the last year's addition.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sutton, and then Councilmember Hurley.
Thank you, Mayor. James, the M2 has certain requirements for screening. Am I...
That is correct.
Correct in that?
Anytime an industrial use is adjacent to that of a residential use, the use must, during the development period or development process, create a landscape barrier, that would be a 10-foot landscape barrier with a tree for every 25 feet of that landscape barrier, and maintain a privacy fence not to exceed eight feet in height.
Okay. Do the Lassiter's addition and the Midway Park currently meet those screening requirements, or are they in compliance with that?
There are some non-conforming issues with Lassiter's Plumbing at this time, frankly because Lassiter's Plumbing is an old institution and has not triggered anything in terms of the development ordinance or development requirements. For example, the paved parking would be triggered if he were to expand that parking, which he has not done, and that parking lot was prior to 1998 Hard Surface Amendment, so it is a gravelled surface that he's referring to, and does at times get quite dusty because there are several cars parked there throughout the day.
I see. Okay. And do you understand that if this were to be developed for the... What's being proposed tonight, that the screening requirements would kick in, and are you familiar with those screening requirements?
From what I know, it's an eight-foot wall, is that correct?
It can be an eight-foot privacy fence.
200 feet or...
10-foot landscape.
10-foot landscape.
Are you aware that those screening requirements would be mandated for anything?
I am aware, but from the existing neighbors and existing zoning adjacent to the neighborhood, I don't think it really helps. I don't think it really helps.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Hurley.
I had a question for James, but I think, Mr. Sutton, I was already asked, how big of a buffer are we going to have at the back of the property between the M2, if it's rezoned, and the residential?
The buffer will not be triggered until there is some form of development. I cannot force him just that he has zoned that, but the development factor, if he chooses to expand his facility, which if you note on the aerial, is still quite a ways back from the residential properties, he must maintain a 10-foot landscape buffer from that adjoining residential area and maintain a screening device, which could be a wood or brick or metal fence, up to eight feet in height.
And according to my GIS map here, you've got property on both sides that are already M2.
That is true. It is surrounded by M2 properties, and then the smaller tracks that Mr. Fowler owns are zoned M1 and going to M2, which are at this time vacant with no structure on them.
And if this were rezoned as M2, it'd only be consistent with adjacent property, right?
That is correct. It would form a contiguous zone that is indicated and desired by the land use map, which we passed in 2002.
Thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
Thank you. I need you to elaborate on something, Mr. Pulisca. And I couldn't pronounce your name if I practiced all night, so I'll just call you Mr. for the moment. This property that backs up to yours, now, Mr. Pulisca told us that you're not going to enforce the screening until the property is developed. Isn't there some development on that property already?
There is. There is prior development. That development has been there in existence to the ordinance change in 1998. I could enforce it only if there was some form of development in terms of expansion of his use to the north at this time, but it's my understanding...
Grandfathered in.
It's grandfathered in. But it's my understanding that the applicant, Mr. Fowler, indeed will put that barrier in there. I cannot enforce it at this time, given that it is grandfathered. If he chooses to do so, then he is more than welcome to do it, and I would strongly suggest that. And again, it would be just a screening device and a 10-foot landscape barrier.
I wasn't at the planning and zoning meeting, and so I'm not privileged. All the information was there. Now, you said that Mr. Fowler said that he would be cooperative in doing that. If we were to pass this and put the provisions, and he did go ahead and put the fence in there?
We couldn't do that, sir. That is considered contract zoning, and I believe the attorney is going to speak up at that point and suggest that we not do that. I would strongly encourage Mr. Fowler to do so as a concerned resident and neighbor to these people, but at the same time, I wouldn't suggest putting it in. It is a good idea, but I wouldn't suggest putting it in zoning requirements.
Well, I didn't quiz Mr. Fowler on it because I knew that he would have a conflict with it, but I know some of the stuff that he's done in the past. He's done quality work on it, and I would feel much better if I knew that there was going to be a fence between him and the residence. And it has nothing to do with the zoning, but I'd like to have somebody address this plumbing company as far as the dust and stuff going into the neighbor's pool.
If I formally receive a complaint, which tonight's situation is considered as such...
Are you complaining?
We will look into that.
Well, it's... I'm not the one with the pool, Mr. Thompson.
But since you read it into the record, we don't mind checking on that. And I myself have gone to that situation and looked at it on numerous occasions, but it's yet at this point, again, he is grandfathered. We can just strongly suggest that he do the neighbors a favor if, since I've got this verified complaint, that he attempt to keep the dust down.
A lot of the tenants down here are willing to work with the neighbors and be good neighbors, and he may not even be aware of it. I don't know if anybody's brought it to his attention, so maybe we brought that to his attention. But the fence still, I wish I had Trey here or each other and grab him and ask him about the fence, but it... You know, I think the fence between there would be a good thing for the city, a good thing for his development, a good thing for the neighbors on the north.
It is understood, though, that as a duplex zone, I could not, of course, enforce any of the...
Right.
...development restrictions. But now that, if he does indeed get this zoning, he lays down a yard of concrete or any sort of expansion, it will trigger that.
Any improvement whatsoever?
Any improvement whatsoever.
Even flatwork?
Yes.
Okay. Now, you don't have to have a permit for flatwork?
Don't need a permit for it. He will not need a permit, but again, it constitutes change in a non-conforming situation which he cannot expand. It's very clear in the ordinance. If he does some form of expansion, it will trigger new development standards.
All right. For the benefit of those listening, flatwork means like you're pouring a patio or driveway or a sidewalk or anything like that?
Which we do not control through the permit process for flatwork. If he does indeed pour flatwork or lay it down, he must make sure that it is engineered quality and so forth and so forth, and meet the city's requirements. However, no permit is required.
For the benefit of myself and those around here, how do we police that? How do we know that there's no... I mean, when y'all do the zoning on this, y'all do some kind of inventory as to what's there?
We generally, as you can see in the reports, which are very thorough, we have a GIS aerial. We have information given to us by the applicant. Occasionally, like when we're doing code enforcement, we'll go by and look at some of these to make sure, especially recent zoning cases, to make sure they do meet the standards of the new district. So there is a kind of an inflow of staff looking at it from time to time, but we primarily require the neighbors to notify us if indeed they do see a change in this type of situation.
One last question, if I could, Mr. Mayor. You'd said pre-council about some letters that you got in opposition. Were any of those people that sent the letters in opposition, were they present at the meeting?
There is another gentleman, Mr. Thompson, that was present. However, this gentleman has been kind of their representative for that.
Okay. Did, when he left, did he feel like he was comfortable with this, or could you tell?
I'm not sure what you mean by comfortable with.
Did they address his concerns, and did he leave satisfied with his concerns addressed?
Mr. Thompson?
Yes. I know that's asking you to give somebody else's... Apparently, you weren't.
He said he was going to show up today also, but I guess he has other things, but...
If you had your suggestion on what to do here, what would you do?
From what my understanding is, that he can't do it, my suggestion would be to maybe subdivide the zone and zone the M2 on the existing property that he has the structures on and he has his equipments on, and the remaining zone would remain a D.
Is he eventually going to plant these together?
It's my understanding, yes, sir, he's going to plant it all into one lot, but at this point, we cannot split zone a piece of property.
And the reason?
It's a violation of state statutes.
Yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong, if you've got two pieces of property and say that I own two pieces of property that butt each other, I cannot do any improvements across the property line on those pieces of property until I plant them?
That is correct. You cannot... Of course, you could do flatwork because we don't regulate it, but any type of structure cannot go across lot lines. That is correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Pranivong, thank you very much. I think the council has asked all the questions they wished of you. Thank you for expressing your concerns on this subject.
Okay, thank you for letting me speak.
Since this is a public hearing and it's still open, are there other members, anyone else in the audience wishing to speak either for or against this application? Okay, there being none, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll move forward to the corresponding ordinance, and I'm prepared to receive a motion regarding this matter. Councilmember Hurley?
Mayor, I approve ordinance 02-003-015-15.
Have a motion to approve. Councilmember Avery?
Mine was for a... To make the motion, Mayor, but I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, there being none, if you'll register your vote, I will display it at this time, and that passes with Councilmember Fowler abstaining. Councilmember Fowler will rejoin us here at the council table at this time, and we'll move on then to item number five. That is a public hearing, and our finance director, Mr. Pat Elfrink, will introduce this item at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have been working on budgets of all sorts for the city for the past several months. Some of our operations have special statutory requirements with regard to how these budgets are put together and how we hold public hearings and such. The crime district has a specific requirement for a public hearing to be held no less than 45 days prior to the first day of the fiscal year. The council has reviewed this budget on more than one occasion, and I have a copy of it in this agenda item as an attachment. It contains estimated revenues for the next fiscal year of $778,200, expenditures estimated at $836,854, and an ending fund balance of $191,125. Basically, that's all I have to introduce this item if the council has any questions, but we're here primarily tonight for a public hearing and receive input from the public.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Elfrink, and I will open the public hearing at this time. As Mr. Elfrink has just indicated, the purpose of this item being on the agenda is to conduct a public hearing as required by law to get public input on the matter of the Crime Control and Prevention District budget for year 2003, 2004. There will be no action taken by the council on this subject tonight. It's simply to conduct a public hearing to allow members of the audience who wish to make any comments, ask any questions regarding this matter, to give them the opportunity to do so. This budget then will be included in the general budget that will be approved at a later time. Is that correct?
That is correct. We will actually have an opportunity on the 25th of August when we have our regular public hearing for the rest of the city budgets. People would certainly be able to come and speak regarding this at that time, too, I'm sure.
Okay, since this is a public hearing, do we have anyone in the audience wishing to speak regarding the proposed budget for the Crime Control and Prevention District board? Okay, there being none, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll move forward to item number six, which is the property tax rate. Mr. Elfrink, I believe this is your item again to introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the past several months... For the past several months, the council has been working very hard with staff to develop a budget that will satisfy the requirements of our citizens for the next fiscal year. What we have here tonight is a requirement of the state property tax code to take a record vote on a proposed rate and to schedule a public hearing for that rate. The rate that is contained in this budget is 52.095 cents per hundred dollars of property value. This rate was originally proposed to the city council by the city manager at the beginning of our budget workshops about three weeks ago, and a consensus was reached by this body at the July 30 budget review workshop. The goal of this rate is to provide quality services, to continue to provide quality services to our residents and business property owners, while at the same time preserve a certain level of financial stability with regard to the reserve funds of the general fund. The proposed rate is 6.52 cents higher than the current rate of .45575, and it's estimated that this additional rate will generate $837,472 in property tax revenue. I would like to point out, as I have in the agenda item, this is the first tax rate increase Halton City has had since 1994, when the tax rate was set at 48.290 cents per hundred dollars of value. Since that last increase in 1994, however, tax rates have been reduced on three separate occasions, 1995, 1996, and in the year 2000. What we have facing us today, however, are some extraordinary reductions in other revenues that have forced us to consider this action. We have had significant decreases in our sales tax revenue, and what I point out here is over the past three years, a decrease of nearly $600,000 and a decrease of just under $800,000 in our fines and fees areas. This budget was a very difficult project to develop and to bring to the council and to work with you. However, I think the staff and the city manager, who I'm sure will have some words to say about this, know that we took every single step we could to try and minimize the impact of the changes that we've had in our economy, but still try and provide for the types of services, public safety, street maintenance, library, and so forth to the public. One of the major steps that we took in this regard to minimize the impact of a tax rate increase was the freezing, the non-funding of 21 staff positions in the general fund alone for next year for an estimated savings of $852,000. That's basically all I have to say on this particular item. I'll be glad to answer questions, but I'm sure also that our city manager may wish to elaborate some more, or, and I know other council members may wish to speak.
Yeah, I think, thank you, Mr. Elfrink. I think how we'll proceed from here, since this is, we're not taking, and I want everybody in the audience and those watching, the action that we'll be taking in a little bit regarding this item is not the final vote on setting the tax rate. That will occur sometime between now and October 1st. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
So what we're doing tonight is simply taking a preliminary vote, what is called a vote of record. And I know, as Mr. Elfrink has indicated, this has been a very difficult, challenging process for us, and in times like this, I think it's very important for our citizens to hear from their elected officials and to, for the elected officials to have an opportunity to share their thoughts about where they're coming from and what their thoughts are regarding the proposed financial impact on what we're going to be doing. I want to, at this time, to ask the city manager, I think he has some comments to make. Followed, following that, I will make a few comments, and then I'll open the table for discussion by other members of the council who might like to make a statement or comments regarding the property tax rate. So with that having been said, our city manager, Mr. Richard Torres.
Mayor and council and citizens, I think, I'd like to start off, first of all, by reinforcing many of the comments that Mr. Elfrink mentioned. Truly, this has been one of the most difficult budget processes that I have been through and that most of the staff has been through. I think we've been very fortunate in the recent 10 or 15 years that we've pretty much been working in very healthy economies where there's been a lot of growth, and we've been able to rely on that growth to sustain our needs and to allow the local government to grow. But when that economy does an absolute reverse turn on you, suddenly you have to rethink the way you conduct business, and that's what's happened to us in the last few months. We've really got some strong indication of how the economy was going to hurt Halton City early in the year, early in the calendar year, and that's when we brought some of these issues to the city council and began discussing it. And so the things that we're dealing with today are really no surprise at all. We knew that we would probably be in this situation. And we started cutting back very early to try to head off some of these things. I personally never had to recommend a tax increase like this, and I've never been able to orchestrate the preparation of a budget in such a way that necessitated a tax increase. So it's a very strange feeling to be in this. I'd like to reassure everyone that not only our staff, but this city council have gone the extra mile to analyze our expenditures and, you know, reevaluate the way we're conducting business and to try to look at areas where there might be waste and look at areas where we might be able to cut back and not reduce any level of government, level of service that we're currently providing. And that's been a big focus. We know we're going to have to cut back, but we don't want the citizens here to recognize any difference in the services we provide. So as Pat mentioned, we've recommended the reduction of 21 positions in our general fund, which is what, where the property tax revenue goes. There are a few more in some other funds, but 21 positions have been recommended for elimination next year. Fortunately, the vast majority of those positions are already vacant, so we're not looking at actually having to lay people off or very few. There are still a few involved, and we're not very pleased or proud of that. You know, even with all the cuts that we've done to include no pay increases for our city employees next year, and that's a significant ticket item in any one fiscal year for this organization. Typically, the city would be able to provide its employees somewhere between 2% and 4% annually and try to keep up with the cost of living, but in next year's budget, we have not been able to provide for any pay increases at all. Even with all these measures that we've taken to meet our revenue needs, the way we project them now, we're going to have to raise taxes, and it's unavoidable, and we've done whatever we could certainly to minimize that. As Pat mentioned, significant reductions in sales tax and franchise tax are two of the leading reasons why, you know, we're hurting so bad financially. Court revenues, I guess Pat mentioned the sales tax and the court revenues, but really the franchise fee reduction has also a fairly big ticket in our general fund operations, and we're feeling the pinch of that. The deregulation that we've all had with electric and telephone and cable, you know, in my opinion, I think the deregulation's been very good for the consumers. I know my own household bill has benefited from deregulation, but the unfortunate part of that is when the citizens reap those benefits, the government, who receives a portion of those utility bills, are declining. So, you know, it's kind of a mixed bag. I think that, you know, I feel good that fortunately we're, we already have a very low tax rate, relatively speaking, and this proposed tax increase that we're looking at should not price us out of the local market. I also feel pretty positive about the improvements that we have ongoing, the various facilities we have under construction, street improvements, utility repairs, park improvements, variety of capital improvements that you will see very visibly going on throughout the city. We should not, we should be in a position where we won't have to reduce a great deal of that. We'll be able to keep up with our very progressive rate that we're going at, and I think that's been a priority of the council. There's street improvements particularly, has been one of the highest priorities of this council, and it probably will continue to be, and assuming we continue on down the road we're headed, even with the downturn in the economy, you're still going to see a great number of visible improvements throughout the community. I feel like we're almost making excuses, and I really hate that, you know, that's not something I'm very good at, but we, I guess we all feel that the residents here need some good explanation of why we're looking at doing what we're doing here, so. And if there's any need for any resident to sit down with me personally or any of my staff and sit down and go over some numbers, and we'd be more than happy to do that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Torres, and I'll make the few comments I have to make, and then we'll allow the members of the council to make whatever statements they wish in regard to this item. I don't know if I'll get to vote on the tax rate tonight or not, since I only vote in case of a tie, but I think it's important for the citizens of Halton City to know the mayor's position on the budget and the tax rate, particularly if an increase in the tax rate is proposed, which is what we have under consideration. This is the ninth time I have been through the budget process as an elected official, and I'll have to say it's the most challenging, the most difficult process I have been through in all of those nine times. I know the city manager and his staff has worked for months earlier in the year to bring this budget together and present it to the council for consideration. The council has conducted five three-hour budget workshops, or maybe a little bit longer than that, and we've gone over that budget line item at a time, and we've asked the tough questions, we've evaluated, we've put everything under the microscope. And as already been alluded to by the city manager and the finance director, the sales tax, the franchise fees, the municipal court revenues, just those three items are about a million six, if my numbers are correct, and that represents about the equivalent of a 13 cents on the tax rate, just those items. Now, when revenue is significantly reduced, in order to balance the budget, which we're required by law to do, there are only three things that we can do. Number one is dip into savings, number two is to cut expenses, number three is raise taxes. And what is being proposed in the budget the city manager brought forward and that we're going to be taking a vote on the tax rate tonight and will be voting on adopting the budget at a later time, presents a balanced approach to these three items: cutting expenses, dipping into savings, and raising taxes. And I think that's very healthy. We don't just focus on one of those and put the burden on cutting expenses or dipping into savings or raising the tax on any one of those three, but we do all three of them. In the area of dipping into savings, that's close to 40% that we are dipping into the fund balance, but even that is not enough by itself. We zeroed out a lot of line items as we've gone through the budget process, and it's incredible how many of those have been zeroed out, and we've reduced staff, as already been alluded to. And that brings us then to the matter of raising taxes, and both the city manager and Mr. Elfrink have talked about the last time the tax was increased and how that there's actually been reductions on three different occasions, and so I'm not going to belabor that point any further. The point I want to make tonight is that I'm in support of this budget. I'm in support of cutting expenses the way we have, of dipping into the savings, and I'm in support of the tax rate increase as it has been proposed. I don't like any of those, but this is the hard economic reality of where Halton City is at this time, and caused in large part by the things that have been mentioned earlier that's out of our control. In order to keep Halton City healthy and strong and vibrant and moving forward, I support this increase that is being proposed tonight to 52 cents, .095. It's absolutely necessary for this year. I don't really like to cut and dip and raise because I'm impacted, just like all the other citizens are. I've had an opportunity this last week or two to talk with a lot of citizens in the community, and I've asked for their understanding and for their partnership, and I've been amazed at how many have just overwhelmingly been in support, understanding, while they don't like it, they understand why we're having to take the steps we are, and I want to say I appreciate that understanding. We do want to keep Halton City healthy and vibrant and strong and moving forward, and we have to do these things in order to do that. Now, between now and next year, in order to improve our situation, there's some things we can do. We can be excited about Halton City. We can shop Halton City and support our local businesses. We have development coming in on Halton Road up here, 113 new homes. We'll see dirt turning in the next two or three months, just inside the loop. That's very positive. We need to see things like that continue. But economic development has got to be a major focus on what we do. We have to see dirt turning this next year, and we're going to be putting a whole lot of emphasis on that. But for tonight, I want my colleagues here and the staff and the citizens of Halton City to understand that I am in favor of increasing the tax rate to .52095, and I would be voting to that effect if I'm given the opportunity a little bit later. Councilmember Sutton, I believe you have your light on next.
Thank you, Mayor. The vote we're taking on tonight defines the maximum property tax that this council will request from its citizens. As Pat Elfrink explained to us, this vote will also authorize the city staff to publish a public notice of the current proposed property tax increase in the local newspaper. Through budget deliberations over the next few weeks, this rate could decrease, but if this vote passes tonight on this agenda item, it cannot be increased at a later time by the council. Now, this vote sets in motion what was started back in February this year when some of the council present here met with the city staff for an out-of-town budget retreat to set budget priorities for the coming fiscal year. Now, I was elected by the citizens in May on the basis that something was not right with the direction our city was taking, and it was time for change. Councilperson Bransom and I came on midstream in May to this budget process, leaving us little room to influence the major budget issues that are currently driving this proposed budget. The last several weeks, this council has met with the city staff to review the budget that the staff prepared based on the council's priorities communicated back during the February budget retreat. All right, much of the loss, now, right now, the people at home should see a revenue chart appearing on their TV. All right, and this is what it is for those of us here. Much of the loss of revenue driving the proposed property tax increases due to the following factors: the proposed end of fiscal year, '02-'03 projected revenue losses, for sales tax revenue, or 807,500 is what I get from the figures that were given to us by our finance director. The franchise fees are down 294,500, licenses and permit fees are down 208,400, court fees and fines 223,500. That means we have a gross revenue loss that is projected for the end of the year to be about a million 53. Now, our projected revenue gains, we did have some gains in some of our funds, property tax, service charges, and miscellaneous revenues gave us an additional 730,540. So we have a net revenue loss that we're projecting for the end of this fiscal year budget of 803,370. All right, some of the other revenue funds. Now, this means that this loss of revenue is coming at a time when the council's spending priorities have been placed on building city structures, such as a library, fire hall, and public works building. In all, five major projects, which have all been financed through bond debt issues, some of which were approved by the voters of this city. Now, my sense of the budget after review- of the budget after reviewing it these past several weeks is that we need to make a shift from a low-tax city to a moderately taxed city to support the level of infrastructure development that has been orchestrated by five of my fellow city council members prior to the time that I came on the council. Now, I share the vision of my fellow council members to upgrade and improve the image of our city. I believe that's the modus for doing that. I don't believe, however, that the way to upgrade and improve the image of the city necessarily at this time is to build bigger and better government buildings at the expense of other means of improving and upgrading the image that should take priority. For instance, the proposed budget before us cuts two-thirds, two-thirds of the planned street renovations, projects that are on the books now. In my opinion, streets are a major concern of our citizens and the number-one contribution to our city's image. Our city workers are on the front lines of our city's public image. As the city manager has already stated, in this proposed budget, they've not been given any raise whatsoever this year, which puts them largely out of step with the surrounding communities. Now, thankfully, legal fees have been cut in the proposed budget from an all-time high this fiscal year. I sincerely hope that these costly fees will be avoided in the future by our actions and oversight on this council. Now, the city staff work long and hard to produce a budget that would not significantly deplete the fund levels, uh, as was saying. We're gonna dip into them a little bit, but not that much. All of us on this council are grateful for their work on behalf of all of us here in Halton City. I see no way to further reduce the budget without impacting the council's priorities that were the basis for the many hours of time put into this proposed budget. I do however feel that it is essential to ensure that this council will not vote to increase the tax rate beyond the proposed maximum rate of fifty-two-point-oh-nine-five cents. Now, I hope that in the next several weeks in closing, we'll be able to work towards bringing this proposed budget more in line with priorities that do provide more benefit to all citizens by spending that goes further to upgrade and improve the image of our city versus project that risks the potential of further dividing a community in the manner in which new buildings are memorialized. We can work together to better the community we live in, and in doing so, realize the potential that this community has always had to nurture its own neighborhoods and bring blessing to the larger DFW community. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else wish to, uh, to make comments regarding the proposed property tax rate? Councilmember Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, as you've previously stated, share your concerns. This is my seventh opportunity to, to go through the budget process, and I looked at some of the numbers in, in pre-council, and as the city staff had mentioned, this is a very difficult budget. It's very difficult times throughout, uh, not only Tarrant County, but the United States, as everyone, I'm sure, has felt in one way or another the effect of, of the economy and the situation that we're in right now. Uh, I do foresee things getting better. Uh, I think the only way that you, you get better is you, you do the things that, uh, you know, that this community I feel like's needed for a long time, not to be contradictory to, to Councilmember Sutton, but some of the facilities, I think, if you go out and you, and you do the things, you build new streets and you build new roads, I think you, you encourage future economic development. I feel like that that's a way to, to get things started and spur development on. Uh, I looked at, looked at some in comparison so some of the citizens may understand a little better. The average household in Tarrant County is, is, uh, or the median household in Tarrant County, which would be your average, is a hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars. Halton City is seventy-seven thousand dollars, which is roughly half, the, half the value of the average throughout Tarrant County. The average tax rate throughout Tarrant County is fifty-five cents per hundred. We're proposing to go only to fifty-two cents per hundred. Um, we ranked twenty-sixth of thirty-four among all communities in Tarrant County of taxable value. The proposed tax rate would increase, or not necessarily increase, but, uh, would be about three-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars per household, per average household within the city limits of Halton City. For the services that our staff provides and the things that we're trying to provide for this community, uh, better park systems, better police and fire, library systems, communications, uh, street water services, everything that this, that the city does for you on a daily basis is done with three-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars per household. I look at the high, uh, which is Westover Hills, they pay four-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty, or, four-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars per household. Um, and as I said, we ranked twenty-sixth among thirty-four communities within Tarrant County, uh, of, as far as, as a good value for the dollar that you get. So, I feel like, uh, I hate the fact that we're, we're put in this position that we do need to raise taxes, but maybe it's time that, uh, if we'll step back and, and maybe in January, when Broadway's finished and, and Carson Street's finished and the new recreation centers completed and the, the, we have a library expansion that's upcoming and a new public works facility and a new fire station that we can all be proud of as citizens, I think that we'll begin to take the step forward that we need to, to encourage more businesses to come into the community and take some of the burden off of the residential property owners. So, I think it's a step that we must take. We, we're just, uh, where we miss if we don't, and I feel like it's very important that we do do this at this point, although we, none of us like it up here. Uh, I think it is our, our duty and necessity to, to take this step. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fowler. Uh, other members of the council, Councilmember Branson?
Thank you, Mayor. In April, Ellen Schroeder called me, um, when she found out that I was a candidate and asked me what my opinion was on the current budget, uh, situation in Halton City. And I made the statement at that time that I felt it was something that we couldn't tax ourselves out of, and I still stand by that opinion. I like, uh, Councilman Sutton was not a part of the decisions that were made that helped create some of our situations, but I am responsible for helping find a solution to those. I feel that economic development is still our best way out. I hope that we've had some lessons learned by putting all our eggs in one basket, by getting sales tax from, uh, just a couple of tax-generating businesses. I hope to see that we will have some diverse retail businesses that will invite people to come in and shop in our city and leave their tax money here. And, uh, by leaving their tax dollars here, we'll have more money to offer, uh, citizens the services that they deserve. Uh, we can't count on one or two businesses, but I, I do think that we've learned that lesson. Another area that we need to work on is cutting expenses. I believe that when we have a, that we have an obligation, if we raise the taxes, to really watch what we authorize spending money on. That includes studies and other obligations that come up. I think we need to ask ourselves if they're nice to haves or have-to-haves, if maybe they could wait till the next year. Uh, I challenge my other council, um, members to do that when they're presented. It's not that they're bad ideas. I just think we need to be really observant of the money that we're spending of the citizens. Once we have the situation under control, perhaps we could be a little more generous in that area. I can't support any cuts that affect streets, infrastructure, public safety, or economic development. I will support those full air, those four areas fully and completely, and I hope that the others do the same. And I hope that, um, we, we can earn your trust by spending your money wisely this year, and hopefully we will have things turned around shortly. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Branson. Uh, other members of the council, uh, would you like to make comments at this time? Councilmember Williams?
That's gonna be nice, but John, no, that couldn't happen. Uh, I admire the mayor for his three budgets he's been through, and I trade with his six. I've been through twenty-five budgets, five here with the city and twenty every year that I've been in business twenty years in Halton City this year. August was the twentieth anniversary, and so I have to figure a budget for my business every year. Uh, to clarify a few things for my fellow councilmembers here, uh, Councilmember Sutton and Councilmember Branson, uh, who weren't in on the budget, uh, put together with this, I don't remember, but I think that I was irritated a couple of weeks ago that I just got my budget booked. Uh, did we just get our budgets just a few weeks ago, Mr. City Manager?
July the fifteenth or sixteenth, fourteenth.
Was that this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I thought. I didn't, I didn't get to see a budget until that day. And, uh, I don't, did I have any input on that budget till that day? Not really.
Not specifically, no?
No, I didn't think so. So, everybody got the budget that sits on this council at the same time, so let's not play games and try to put the help, the blame elsewhere. Uh, I look at layoffs. I roughly counted a while ago, if we count Mr. Ragsdale back there in the van, there's Joe Needes, I got another one. We've got about eighteen employees here tonight that, uh, they and their families depend on Halton City. Uh, I'm counting the one back there also on the camera. Uh, I apologize for not having a PowerPoint presentation for the citizens on TV. I, I didn't know we were gonna use those. Uh, seventeen employees here that each one of them has a family, uh, that depends on Halton City. There's neither one of the seventeen that I see here, eighteen, whatever it is, has done a bad job for us or in any way has affected this budget to make the budget bad. Uh, as I told my colleagues in the, uh, budget workshops, I'm embarrassed to present a budget to the city that I can't reward my employees that have been working for us for a number of years and can't offer any kinda raise for them whatsoever, even though in those that have families, the insurance on their dependents is gonna go up somewhere between seventeen to twenty-five percent. Uh, they won't actually take a cut in pay. They'll just have a cut and take-home pay. Uh, they'll still be grossing the same amount of money. They just won't get to carry as much home. Uh, we've had to answer them outside entities to help us. Uh, that's embarrassing to have to go to another, uh, source to try to get help in the financing. Uh, I believe that our finance director, city manager, assistant city manager have all worked very hard. It means the department heads, I know they took this budget, and they've, uh, they've wallowed around pretty good. I, I haven't been on any of those meetings, but I, I can understand how they could get pretty heated at a time like that and the department heads wanting to keep the people they have. Uh, we're cutting some blue-collar workers out. There's gonna be some people that's, that's out there on the end of shovels and stuff, and I requested at the last budget meeting, and I hope we can do it shortly after this, when we approve this tonight, if we could go ahead and contact those people that we're planning on laying off and let them have plenty of notice where they can find jobs elsewhere. Uh, the rate is fifty-two-oh-nine-five per hundred. I'm not in agreement with that. Uh, I'm not saying it's too high. I'm not saying it's too low. It just gets back to the bureaucracy. Uh, you know, why do we have to run an ad in the paper to say that we're gonna run, we're gonna raise the taxes point-five-two-oh-nine-five and then turn around in the same statement and say, but we're probably not gonna raise them that high. You know, I think when we go to make a, I, I know it's a state law that we can do that, but I think when we present that to the public, we should present them the bare figure of what it's gonna be, not more, not less. Uh, I know Mr. Sutton in his PowerPoint presentation said that, uh, it, uh, we're gonna put this fifty-two cents, but it could be less. Uh, I've seen the budget since the middle of July, gone through it. This council's cut and cut and cut everywhere they could think of, and I don't see it cutting far below fifty-two cents. I think what we need to do is try to, all of Halton City pulled together. If there's something you're gonna buy and it's in Halton City, we need to try to buy it in Halton City. Uh, we got fifty-two COs, I believe it was, uh, in the last quarter. Uh, that's where we're involved in a quad cities, and that's more than the other three cities, I believe, put together, if I'm not mistaken. That means people are coming to Halton City. Uh, Mr. Flint with our economic development, he's worked tirelessly trying to bring businesses, and, uh, it's just come to a time that, you know, Halton City is gonna have to take a step forward. Uh, there's gonna be, have to raise in taxes, and, uh, I'll go ahead and commit suicide right now. Alcohol's right around the corner, and I don't like that. I, I don't like, I don't use it, but I think we pushed ourselves in the corner keeping our taxes so low for so many years that that's probably gonna be facing us. And so, you know, you can pay it now or you can pay it later. And, uh, I'm gonna vote against this tonight because I don't believe in voting against something we don't actually know what we're gonna put on it. When they give me a, a dead-set figure, I will vote in favor of the tax increase, but when we put a ceiling up or not knowing where we're gonna put it, I'm not gonna vote for it.
Uh, other members of the council, uh, any comments? Uh, Councilmember Branson, before I recognize you, your lights come on. Let me be sure I have, uh, given everyone else an opportunity since you've spoken once. Uh, anyone else wishing to speak on this? Okay, there being done, Councilmember Branson, and once, uh, she has spoken, I'll be ready for a motion regarding, uh, item number six.
I just would like to make a point of clarification for Councilman Williams, that when I was referring to you already having participated in the workshops, I was referring to the workshops back in the spring that the council had. I got the budget book the same time you did, but was not privy to all the information that you, because I didn't drive out there. I know it was an open meeting, but I was not privy to all the conversations that went on out there, and that was the meeting I was referring to.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Hurley?
Are you ready for motion, Mayor?
I'm ready for motion, and as we do, let's remember there are two parts to this. Uh, we're taking a record vote, and also we'll be scheduling a public hearing, so if your motion, if you would, we might wanna include both of those items.
I think everything has been said that could be said without repeating. I make a motion that we adopt the rate of point-oh-five-two-oh-nine-five tax rate.
Okay. Uh, do you want to include the setting, scheduling of the public hearing for August twenty-fifth in that, or you wanna make a second motion?
Yes, okay. Um, also to set the public hearing for that.
Okay, we have a motion.
Yeah, I think we need to read the tax rate. All right, um, the proposed tax rate of zero-point-five-two-oh-nine-five? Well, that's what it says on my package.
Point-five-two.
Right.
It was correct that time.
Zero-point-five-two-oh-nine-five.
Yes.
Oh, that's what I said.
I thought you missed the decimal. I didn't wanna be caught with the technicality.
It's fifty-two cents anyway you look at it.
There you go.
Okay. Mr. Elfrink, does that, uh...
That, that works, and, and his motion includes scheduling the public hearing for the August the twenty-fifth. Thank you.
We have a motion. Do I have a second to that motion? Councilmember Henderson?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Uh, you've heard the motion. Uh, you're aware of the second. Any discussion on the motion? If you will, register your vote at this time, please. Everybody have it, uh, registered. I'll just play it. Uh, that, uh, Miss Dobbs, you see the, uh, the vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, we will, uh, move forward with our, uh, with our, uh, agenda tonight. Uh, item six A that we have, discussion of the official newspaper of record, that item is being pulled tonight to allow our legal, uh, department to take a look at it. It will come back before us at a later time, uh, for discussion, uh, as an agenda item, uh, on the council. This is a very important, uh, matter, and, uh, we just need a little more clarity before we took a step forward. Uh, we come now to item number seven, and that is resignation of board members. Uh, I'm ready, uh, believe Councilmember Sutton, you have, uh, a resignation to bring forth for ratification.
Yes, I do, Mayor. Uh, it's count, it's, uh, Jim Bannister of the Fire Services Board, and he, uh, has, uh, recently resigned due to, uh, time conflicts.
Okay, we have, uh, Mr. Bannister's resignation from the Fire Services Board. If you will, uh, register your vote regarding ratification. We have a conversation going on down the end of the table. Y'all wanna register your vote? That's what happens when you don't pay attention, when you've got a side conversation going on. Okay. Uh, appointments and reappointments. Uh, Councilmember Fowler, I believe you have an appointment?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for ratification of Ms. Denise Ford, uh, to be placed on beautification board to represent place four.
Okay, uh, will you, uh, please register your vote at this time regarding, uh, uh, Councilmember Fowler's, uh, appointment? Okay, we'll assume Councilmember Fowler's vote for his... Okay, and I have, uh, an appointment to make to the Sexually Oriented Business Appeals Board, uh, Mr. Ray Eklund. I'm asking for ratification, uh, on that, on that appointment. Uh, Councilmember Branson, you want, there we go. All right, we have, uh, uh, we move now to item number- All right, we have, we move now to item number nine, which is not relevant to our meeting tonight since everyone is present. We move now into closed session pursuant to section 551, point-oh-seven-one, point-oh-seven-two, and point-oh-seven-four. We'll return in open session to take action on any item discussed that needs action taken.